For the Engine Six build, the replacement of Engine Six for the Lexus. So we can add that in, where do you want to add that? How about right after the Rec Director update?
Which I don't, is he, I don't think he's going to be here unless he snuck back in. So it's, you just have the, you have his report, but he will not be here to brief anything.
Okay. Any other discussion concerning the agenda? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Approval of the minutes for October 28th?
Make a motion to approve the minutes of October 28th, 2024.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, do we have discussion?
Oh, yes.
Um, you go first, Mary Lee, I've got a couple, but you may have them as well.
Under present. You should, it should say Chair after your name, way up, way up the very front. Down where it says approval of minutes. Page one, it said, first line of both approved minute paragraph, Rob Steele should be changed to Robert Steele. No, we wanted to eliminate Robert Steele because he was not here. Okay, down under citizen comments, um, it's just a little iffy written. Tom Hughes of Middlebury stated that he has told the board on his last visit that he would keep them updated on Ethan Allen in Castleton Public Events. He has had someone come from Manchester and it says have, it should be has, had a state historic preservation officer, all should be capitalized because they're a particular company. And on page two, one, two, three, four, five, six lines down, there's word about, which I think should be just crossed right off. It's just a word that's not needed. Page three, um, we're down, under salt and shed, one, two, three, four, five, six, the seventh line down, it says, we believe the funds will work even though it looks to be fifty, five thousand difference. Who believes that? And then it says outside contract for site work. Exactly what work? Down further in the next, um, page three, under Towne of Hubbardton, uh, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, on the eighth line, you can cross out that is because it doesn't make any sense, it makes more sense without, without those two words. And the very last line, it says M. Clifford, it was decided. I think M. Clifford should advise it was decided. Manager's report, uh, has been going on for some time, I think it should say, this has been going on for some time. It's the last sentence of the first paragraph of his report. And we're down to where it says Heath Gaiet is full-time operator. The next to the last line, it says he has thirty days, I think instead of he, you should really put his name again to be more clear. And that's it. What did I miss?
Rob?
Uh, she got the ones that I had.
Mark?
I'm good.
Rob?
I'm good also, Dave.
All right, real quick then, uh, page one, um, second line up from the bottom, Thai is spelled wrong in Tai Chi. And I think the bottom line, instead of prepay program, it's pre-K program. And, uh, page three, it's not BMS construction, it's VMS construction. And then at the very bottom, there should be a pair, that where the last line where it starts the town of, should be a new, new, uh, paragraph and it should reference the transfer station, it's nothing to do with the, uh, with the beach and the cost of the beach, so that should be a new paragraph. And something in wording to say that it's concerning the transfer station. And then on page five, uh, middle of the page, it says as to the Merck grant, it should be Murph grant. See it, Mike? In the middle of the, middle of page five. Um, right after the comment, the Crystal Beach building, Crystal Beach, that's, there should be, and that's what I had. Anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Moving on to citizens comments, items not on the agenda. I'll also say that this will be not any, this will not, we will not entertain anything that is to do with the village school or the rec because that is a separate agenda item tonight. So items not on the agenda. Seeing none, we're going to move on. Is there anybody on Zoom, Mike? My hands up.
I, I would like to have, I have a citizen's comment, I have been in a meeting for a long time.
Can you come up to the podium, I know it's awkward, but that way the, the Zoom can pick you up better?
Yeah, yeah.
And you gotta tell me who you are, Chris.
I'm Chris Emel, I live eighteen ninety-three Main Street, and I've been here for a while, so my concern is, um, the trees along Main Street, there's two, two concerns for me. I drove down, started in Hyattville, drove up, look at the trees, there's eight of them that are really in bad shape. They either need pruned out or cut down because they're, they're danger. I mean, we've had trees falling on people, we have, the one in front of, by the beverage gang, or no, no, the one by, um, the corner store there is probably the worst, it's starting, somebody's going to get hurt, or it's just, you know. Other concern I have is when I was tree warden, I remember the state was complaining about how the branches over the driving lanes should be cut up to twelve feet so the trucks can drive over them, under them. I was there all summer, lots of semi trucks and pruning trucks, tree trucks and stuff driving through there, and they're just hurting the branches, and it's not any good for the trees. So if that sort of thing could be put on the budget for, for the tree budget. And the other thing is, is you cut down that tree in front of the post office, I don't really understand that. And, um, the other one is, um, I don't want to, got to do with the rec department, so I'll talk to them. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
You're welcome.
So my question to you, Chris, is which, you said the tree by the corner store, specifically...
I'll take pictures and I'll bring them in the next meeting and show you which ones, but you can just...
Just tell me where it is, I'll go take a look.
By the, the store that the Indians own or the Pakistanis own.
Okay.
That one's the worst, and then just drive down the street, you'll see, there's one by, um, the church, there's a dead one, in the rideaway, the town rideaway or the state rideaway, I always had a hard time figuring out who's who and all that.
Well, that's all, that's all state down there.
Yeah, but the state doesn't do it, so.
Well, we can at least figure out what the questions are. Thank you, Chris.
Right, I think, you're welcome. I'll work with Scott too, go through with him.
Okay, next item, any more citizens comments, anything on Zoom, Mike?
No.
Okay, moving on, um, appointment of members to the Regional Emergency Management Committee. You should have in your packets, a proposal to, um, reappoint the two people we appointed last year, that's specifically Peter Mantello and Michael Jones.
So I'd make a motion, reappoint Peter Mantello and Mike Jones as Castleton's representatives to the Regional Emergency Management Committee.
I'll second.
Moved in second, and any more discussion?
Should be, should be put in the timeframe? Other words, it's what, November twenty, twenty-fourth, the last through September thirtieth, twenty twenty-five?
Do we need to put in their, um, roles too, or no? I would say that's important part is the roles.
They're different, yeah, yeah.
Can you add that to your agenda, or to your, uh, motion, please, Mark?
Okay.
Both the term and the function or roles of each person?
I would rescind the first motion and make a motion that we appoint Peter Mantello as emergency services voter and Mike Jones as emergency manager director as Castleton's representatives to the Regional Emergency Management Committee for the period starting in November of twenty twenty-four through the last of September thirtieth, twenty twenty-five.
Do I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Moved in second, and any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
There's a, there should be something in the blue folder, Dick, for the select board one representative to sign.
Right, so now we're going to move on to the discussion regarding the former Castleton Village School. Specifically, what we're going to be discussing is that there was a meeting that occurred on September ninth of this year at the village school where it was brought to the board's attention that having the school on the market for sale was a detriment to rec's ability to create and sustain programming and create interest in that building. At that point in time, Mr. Brown came back and said that if the rec department in general could create a minimum of five new programs by the end of November of twenty twenty-four, he would consider rescinding the, or removing the village school from the market. So at this point, that's what we're here to discuss. So, um, at that, bearing that in mind, I'm also during the discussion, we're going to try to limit it to one person that is in, in the audience who is in favor of this motion, and anyone who is opposed to it, please try to figure out who would be best to speak for that, because I'm going to limit the discussion to five minutes for each person. So that, bearing that in mind, Mark, would you care to make a motion?
Um, before I do, I would like a minute to say that I think everybody knows that I strongly support, uh, the town keeping the former village school and making it into a recreation center, and I'd like to tell you why I think that that's a good investment for our community. For a few things, that obviously it promotes community fitness, it gives us an opportunity to increase educational equity by some of the programs that are hosted in that building, it supports youth development, it's better to have those kids, uh, in the rec center than throwing apples at cars, it offers support to families in a, an environment that we haven't previously had, it gives people of all ages the opportunity to make friends in the community that you live in by participating in programs there, a place to hold, host cultural events, other community events, I know Rob held the, uh, meeting at Lake Bomazene Environmental Alliance there, not, not a lot of places to do that. It boosts the local economy because we have people coming to use the rec center, it increases property values because it makes our community a desirable place to live, and it makes it easier in keeping and attracting employees for employers in town like the medical center that are trying to hire professionals and have them move to this community. It, uh, it creates the type of community that people want to live in, and for tourism as well, for people that maybe are staying on the lake and experience a rainy weekend, it's other things for them to do, to say they had an enjoyable experience in Castleton, Vermont, and they'd like to come back. I know that it's a cliche to say the future isn't what it used to be, but the future is going to be a lot different, and if we want to continue to attract and keep, do a better job of attracting and keeping young working families in Castleton, we need to provide the types of things that they want to do. And families today are not flocking to fraternal organizations like they were a few decades ago. So I think that if we want to keep our community, a strong community of young working families, and not see what's happened at so many other communities around our country where these single-family homes get turned into six-unit apartment houses that become drug houses, I think we need to think about how we do that. How do we make this a community that people want to come and live in and raise their kids in? And I think that makes this a really, really good investment. Leadership has to be bold, and I think that this is a time for the community to be bold and make a positive move forward. And with that, I would make a motion that the board takes the former Castleton Village School off the active listing for sale, giving our full support to the rec department, the Friends of Rec, and to everyone in the community to, uh, develop a really robust recreation center in our Castle, in our town of Castleton. And I'm asking for the support of the board, and most importantly, I'm asking for the support of the community, because this isn't something the board can do, this is something that takes the whole community.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
At this point, any discussion from the board in addition to what Mr. Brown has already said? Does anyone have anything they wish to add?
I, I wasn't at the September ninth meeting, but a couple times I've asked, numerous times, I want to see the figures, I want to see the revenues versus the expenses. Are we getting any closer? I'm, I know we're not going to break even right now, but I wanted to see if it's come up at all. Is it eighty, twenty? Is it seventy, thirty? I've yet to see those numbers. And it's been a year and a half, two years, I've asked several times for those numbers. Now that you've got all these programs, the revenue side should be coming up. If it's not coming up, then we have an issue. Once again, I will ask for those numbers to be provided to this board. Maybe they were provided on September ninth, I wasn't at the September ninth meeting, but I was, I've been kind of been told those numbers have not been provided. And that's not saying I don't support keeping the building. If we take it off the market, that's fine, but it's still for sale, if somebody walks in and offers us eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars, we better consider it.
Anything else from the board?
I just want to say that I think it would be a good idea to keep it, I mean, the, if we ever in the future were looking to build something like that, there's no way possible we would ever be able to afford any kind of building or a rec center anywhere, whether it be putting it up out back here or anything like that, for the price that we've got in it, there's be no way that the town could replace it at that. And any maintenance that we have to put in it for the foreseeable future regardless is just going to increase the value of the property anyway, so I, I personally don't see what the problem would be taking it off the, off the market and giving those guys a fair chance to see what they can do with it. They've done great in the past few months, I know it's been a couple years, it's been kind of stringing along, but I think they've really shown initiative and done awesome in the past couple months, and I think they'll be able to keep it going.
Bob, I would say, in the revenue portion, it's kind of, what comes first, the chicken or the egg? I think that they have to develop robust programming and, and programming that fits everyone in the community, from preschool, which they have, up through programs that people my age want to participate in, and older. And I think the revenue will come after that. I, I know that's a tough way to look at things, but, uh, but that's how it works, I, in my opinion, that's how it's going to work. But it's going to provide real value to the community.
Anything else from the board?
I think also if we were going to look into leasing, you know, any part of it to anybody else, being able to tell them that for, you know, foreseeable future, you're not going to get kicked out. I mean, who's going to want to sign a contract that could be terminated at any possible time? Which is the way you would have to word any contract, because if somebody wants to buy it, they're done, they got to go unless the other person wants to carry it on, which they may or may not do. So I think there's an avenue for revenue there also, if it's off the market.
Anything else from the board? Mary Lee?
That's all I got.
No.
So at this point, I'm going to ask Andy, would you come up and introduce yourself and if you have a few words to share?
It's all right, I got a little one sheet for her.
Thank you.
Before, let me interrupt for just a moment, I do want to say that I am absolutely thrilled and pleased with the amount of effort that the Friends of Rec have put into this, to make this happen. I think, um, I think the effort's been very much on task and very much on target, and I'm truly happy to see what's happening there.
Well, we appreciate that. Uh, so yeah, I'm Andy Vermeilier, Castleton resident off the first bedroom, uh, the chair of the Friends, and I will say, everything happening here is not me, it's a lot of people in this room that are making all this stuff happen. So I think our group has been introduced before, but, you know, we're focused on recreation for all ages, right? To fundraise, to help with the programming that was existing, but also to enhance the programming. So what you have in front of you are some of the pictures of the people that have been participating, you can see from ages seven to much, much older than that. Uh, we've been focusing on one-off events as much as weekly programming to bring to people in our community. So over on the left-hand side, you can see the one-off kind of events that we had before September, we had a few. Ever since, uh, the select board, uh, that was referenced earlier, um, we've upped the number of events that we've been offering. So we've had outings such as going up Herrick Mountain, uh, there's been a lot of stuff that happening at forty-seven Mechanic Street as well, uh, we had the Little Mermaid cast edition, uh, auditions where there were over thirty people of all ages, um, trying out for that. We had an introduction to bicycle maintenance, we had these paint and sip events where adults came and painted pictures, as well as teens, um, so community building kind of events. You can see we have other things planned in the next two weeks. In addition to that, we've had weekly programs that have, some of them have taken off like crazy, for example, pickleball, you can see on here forty-five, fifty people per week participating in pickleball. Uh, that is happening five days a week in, in the, in the gym. Thursday night cornhole, you can see, uh, we have the theater group now doing their audition, or their, um, their actual cast practice and their crew practice, there's a huge number of people participating in that. Uh, the early childhood hour that Mark Brown referred to, this is with, um, pre, like kindergarten, younger than kindergarten, homeschool kids with their families coming and using that space, uh, for different kinds of activities. And you can see the other things listed here. A lot of the numbers you might say are kind of small, to point at your revenue question, that's like not us, that would be John Alexander certainly for that, um, but I can tell you upfront, there's no way we've made this huge jump in revenue, um, it's really building programs. This is not, or has not been a part of our culture as a community, having so many programs and opportunities for all ages, we just had our youth sports, right, and people were used to seeing that. So we're trying to engage, we're spending a lot of time advertising, trying to get outreach to the community to have people understand what the opportunities are that, that exist in town. Um, you can see there's future endeavors under the way, we're collaborating with the Mint, the Mint is actually coming and offering workshops in, in the building, um, DIY plumbing, some mosaic ornament, ornament creations, and it's really just getting started, people are starting to talk about this more, um, and especially the indoor activities, now that we're turning into winter, indoor walking, these are numbers that are just going to kind of like expand as we get into the winter months. That is aimed usually at older folks who don't want to go outside and walk in the, on the ice, right, and they can go inside and they can exercise. We lost out on malls, this is a perfect venue for people to, to get indoor exercise of all ages. We're also trying to fundraise, and having the building off the market would be incredible for our ability to fundraise. We're willing to write grants, to improve the gym floor, do other projects in the building that would increase its value. We can't write those grants if the building's up for sale. We, we don't, we just, we can't in good faith ask for money from organizations if it's for sale. So I'll say to all these people, and I guess just my last word here, I'm curious how many people here are in favor of keeping this gym, this rec center on our community. So thank you all for supporting us. Thanks for listening.
Thank you, Andy. Thank you. Andy, I have one question, all the members of Friends of Rec, please raise your hand. Well, I'm not a friend, but I've, you know...
Well, you have something to say.
But you know what I mean, you know? Okay, so there's a pretty good cross-section of people here, thank you. We appreciate everything you guys have done, by the way. My last comment before we move on is, uh, I was really thrilled to see the Mint start to show up. I've been talking about that since we wound up owning that building, and to be honest, I have not put any effort into it, other than talk about it, and I, I'm really thrilled to see that start happening. Um, at some point when you want to start setting up a wood shop, let me know, because I may have some experience in doing that kind of thing. So now, is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to taking this building off the market? So, nobody on Zoom, Mike? Just raising their hand. Anybody on Zoom want to speak to the board about an opposition to taking the former CVS off the market? So is there any more discussion from the board? Hearing none, then I'm going to call the question. All in favor of removing the Castleton Village School from the real estate, active real estate market, say aye.
Aye.
Repose? Motion carries. Thank you very much. But I will say to the Friends of Rec, don't back off, please, let's make this happen.
Yeah. We'll all work together.
And we'd love to see you come out and, and participate. Uh, we've seen a few of your faces, I know everybody's busy, but Thursday night, we'll be there for Cornhole, um, we're having an introduction to pickleball on Saturday, so if anybody wants to learn how to play, come on out.
I'm working towards semi-retirement, I have turned down a couple jobs, and I'm going to start turning down more, because, so maybe I can start getting a little artsy and doing things that I truly like to do. All right, um, we're going to move on. Thank you very much for all your support, everybody.
Thank you for your consideration.
Okay, where are we, Planning Commission, Rec Director, Rec Director update, we do not have a Rec Director present tonight, we have gotten his written report, which I have read, and, um, if anyone has questions specifically from the board at this point about that, maybe the town manager and I can help you, but otherwise you'll have to wait and talk to John.
I'm also at, Dick.
Anything? Then we're going to move on. So we have to add, we added into the, uh, agenda the change order from Alexis for the cabin chassis for the F five fifty for the replacement of Engine Six. So Mike, do you want to speak to that, or does the fire department wish to speak to that?
I would defer to the chief.
Our, our truck committee met with the salesman after this, you guys approved the purchase of the truck, it's been months now, and he finally come down a month or so ago, and we met with him and went through the, the bid specs line item by line item, and as you can see in there, as we went through it, we forgot to add shoreline, one-twenty power into the tills and into the cab of the truck in, in our specs, and that's what this change order consists of, and then it was light switches, so you don't have to climb up on the side of the truck to turn the, the pole lights on, as the other one's on there, if you reach through it, there's two different ones. So that's what the change order comes from.
Can you explain that so that the normal person walking down the street will know what you're talking about?
So our lithium, our batteries that runs our extrication tools, our Milwaukee batteries, our portables and our paint, our portables and our stuff gets plugged into the, in the tills of the truck. So it's running power into the tills of the truck, so you can plug that stuff in.
Okay. So coming from the inverter to do those?
Well, and it, and it's a dual switch. So when it's plugged in in here, it's charging off the shoreline. But when we unplug it and start the truck to drive down the road, it runs off the inverter of the truck. So it's a, it's a dual switch mechanism.
Got to swap batteries on the job, you got a good, or one of the Milwaukee tools, you got good batteries.
Yeah, I understand that. I would just, the way you explained it first, like, what is he talking about? So, yeah.
So we can plug stuff in, shoreline power in, in, in the tills.
Yep, yep.
I discussed it with the chief the other day, and, uh, doing it in-house after we received the truck is not the best way to do this. It's best done by the people at the factory that...
It's not going to be ridden, run, so it's hidden, it's, it would be, it would be a mess.
It also wouldn't be warranted.
Yeah. Especially tying into that trucking burger, which none of us have that expertise.
So this, this, this request is to authorize a change order for $3,199, and that would come out of ARP, I believe, correct, Mr. Town Manager?
Remainer of the 30...
Well, this is the reserve account?
Remainer of the 32, or is sinking fund?
The sinking fund, this is sinking fund.
This is reserve account?
This is reserve account, this is engine six, so this is reserve account.
All right. So, do we have a motion?
I would make a motion to approve the $3,199 to Alexis for the change order for engine six.
Engine six replacement.
Engine six replacement.
You may not get that number, but...
For the engine six replacement.
We're moving second. Any more discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Sorry, we had to come back from this, we just missed it.
Let's do this right once.
Try to do it a little bit better the next time.
Well, no, on the truck spec, we missed it, so it wasn't the other person.
Last time you were here, we said we didn't want to see you for another five years.
Yeah, well, here, ain't it bad.
There you are again.
Well, we want to make sure we get this right, too, so...
That would be, 25 years without that in there would be a nuisance.
Now, this one, I believe, is, uh, either you or the highway foreman, the discussion for the maintenance of private roads.
We're skipping a bunch here.
We are. Oh, we are. Holy cow.
I mean, if you want to get out early, Dick, that's fine, let's skip right to the end here, but...
That's okay, we can have, this can be a team sport. Um, planning commission to present the revised UDR. I believe we've all received a copy of the UDR.
Yes.
And, um...
As long as I'm here. I'm the, uh, I'm Frank Johnson, I'm the chair of the planning commission. You all have a copy of this. Obviously, you've seen this document before. What we have done in the most recent edits is the recommendations that came back from you as board, uh, we discussed and we agreed to all of them, and they have been put, they have been edited into the, uh, what we certainly hope is the final document, uh, with a few other, um, typos and one formatting improvement, but nothing that, that has any substance to the document, so... I don't know, I guess I can, happy to answer any questions or anything, if you have anything. Otherwise, I'm just here to say we are delivering it in your good hands, so...
And we have to look this over, and, and that won't happen, as, I have not anywhere, come anywhere near to completion of looking this over. I've got about 10% of the way through it, and...
I'm not here to, I'll beat you into acting quickly on it, just to say we're delivering it back to you.
Okay.
The recommendations all agreed to.
Are we going to see a final copy of this thing?
Well, I think, what we have right, obviously, what you have is redline version now. Um, I think that, I suppose if you, if you, if you really want to, we will, we can have Allison do that. Uh, we just, we, we've been operating off of redline versions of this for, you know, years or more, that we've been working on it. And, um, I think it's a lot of work to, to make it into the final copy, because the page numbering and a lot of other index numbers and things like that have to be all lined up properly. We can do that.
Well, you're not, this isn't going to be what goes to the public, right? With the red line?
No.
So then we really can't approve the final copy if we don't have the final copy?
Well, you do, because everything in there that is, it's a redline version, but things that are, that are stricken out, you know, are not there. So it, it should be, you should be able to read through it and, and be able to, um, read it as if it's the final copy, and then all we will have Allison do is just accept all the changes, and then final copy will come.
What I suggest...
But that said, we, if it's, if it's more efficient and convenient for you all, we can do that.
What I would suggest we all do as a board is take a look at this as it stands now, and make sure that we agree with all the substantive changes. And if we do that, then we can ask them to print us a final version, because Frank, I believe that we have to have the final version in our possession before we approve it.
Okay, yeah.
So, but we can all take a shot at this, and take a look at it, and if there's any changes, any, any issues you have with the substantive changes that have already been made, or something that you think needs to be different, then, uh, we need to provide feedback to, to Mr. Johnson, and we can do that through me, if you like.
I have a question. Seeing how we sent this back to the committee, and they've made changes, aren't they required to have a public meeting before it came back to us? I believe we are.
I'm not sure what the ruling, rule is on that. Um, I think it was our understanding that we give it to you, because the changes we have made are the changes that were requested by you, and that, that, then that you would have the public meeting with, with that, you know, most recent final version of the document.
I may...
But I must say, I don't know, I...
I may be incorrect, but I believe because it was sent back to you, you have to have a public meeting before you give it to us, and then we have to have a public meeting before we can say yes.
I know you're correct about that part.
Okay.
So what I would suggest we do is we all look this over, and if we have feedback for the planning commission, that you provide that feedback, and I would, I guess I would ask that you go through me to do that, so that we have one focal point, so that, and I'll talk to Mr. Johnson, and that way, you know, everyone knows what everyone else is doing, if you know what I'm saying.
Please don't worry us, that's a lot of reading.
No.
You got till noon tomorrow, Mary Lee.
Mary Lee, we, we will dig into your question about the, the proper protocol or procedure for doing that. I, I guess it was my understanding, and, um, we sort of rely, rely on Jim Thomas a lot, because he has so much experience in this area. And he said, well, he believed that looking at the state act, or whatever is, is basically is, is kind of the rule of law that must be followed, uh, that if there's no substantive changes made by us, but that they're made by you, and we're agreeing to them and sending it back to you, that the public hearing would be, there would, there would indeed be a public hearing, but just the select board public hearing. I could be wrong. So maybe we need to research that as well.
Let's just make sure we get this right, Frank.
Yeah, yeah. It's been a while.
So if, if we've got to do that, then we'll do that, but there's no reason...
Do whatever we need to do.
But at this point, there's absolutely no reason, or no, nothing that would prevent us from reading these and providing you feedback.
Absolutely.
And we can get that done. And then if we have to have another planning commission public hearing first, then we'll do that.
But at least then, in the meantime, you've reviewed this, and we'll have our public meeting, and then you know that there, there's no further edits that you want to add in.
And at this point, we can put some effort into coming up with a document that we all agree on.
Yeah.
Because that's what we really, that's our real goal, is we have to get to that. Yes, Frank, go ahead.
Frank, when we gave you a few edits, I, I know one of them was, uh, off-season parking of a camping trailer.
Correct.
And that's amended.
That is, yeah.
Can you refresh my memory what the other two edits were?
So there, the bigger, the biggest ones were, uh, there was height of buildings, where the DRB still has discretion over, um, a variance on height of building, but we've put in language that, that states the important factors that must be factored into their decision.
Mm-hmm, okay.
It's still their decision. So, yeah, that was a big one. And I think the other one was really just the formatting of the table of, of lot size, which was kind of confusing, and we just created more rows to divide that up and make that much more sensible.
So, on those, the two that I had questions, village commercial, so if the lot is being used for commercial usage, there's no minimum square, no minimum square footage, as long as the building doesn't cover more than 70% of it. But if that same lot is used for residential, then it's a 20,000 square foot minimum, half acre.
Okay. I, I mean, I, I've got it on my laptop, I could pull it up here, but, uh...
I just wasn't sure if I was reading that correctly.
I think, I believe so.
Okay.
Yeah.
What page are you on?
Uh, 18. And the same type of thing on recreation commercial, that if the lot was used for recreation, it has a 20,000 square foot minimum, that's a half acre, but if it was used for commercial, it would be a full acre.
I'm sorry, which one are you on now?
Uh, page 18.
Yeah.
Under, uh, recreation commercial designation.
Yeah, I see.
So am I reading that correct? If, if that, if that lot was used for recreation?
Right.
It would have a 20,000 square foot minimum, that's a half acre.
Right.
And if it's commercial, it would require a full acre.
Correct.
And then the same thing on village commercial, if it was...
Yeah.
Commercial, there would be no minimum lot size, as long as 70% of that lot size was not exceeded.
Right.
But if it were residential, it would have the 20,000 square foot half acre.
Okay, yeah.
I'm reading that correctly?
I believe, yes.
Okay. I don't have any more questions.
All right.
Well, we have work to do, Frank. Thank you for all the work you've already done, you and your crew.
We have work to do, too, we're getting, we're moving on to the town plan, so...
Yeah. Put a lot of work into this.
That's also a heavy lift, so thank you for all your efforts.
Thank you, and thank you so much for, uh, for helping us vet this document. It's, it's long and, um...
Important.
It's important, but it's needed, uh, a lot of editing along the way, so we, we appreciate your help on it.
Appreciate all your work.
Anything more on the UDR before we move on? We've all got work to do. When do you think we can be done reviewing this to move on, to provide feedback back to the planning commission? Is it two weeks or a month, or...
I'll be good by the next meeting.
Two weeks? You all agree on two weeks?
If we go a month, we're just going to forget what we read in the first week.
Agreed. So let's be ready to present our planning commission with any feedback we have within two weeks, then we will, we will request a final version.
Okay, I'll make your pies for, for Christmas and Thanksgiving then. 166 pies.
Well, you can read through the UDR while you're waiting for them to bake, right?
You have something to do while they're in the oven. No, I'm sure you have plenty to do.
Seems hard to...
Not enough.
Not enough, okay.
One easy bake. Seems hard to believe we wouldn't have one here tonight.
I made three this afternoon.
Around the windowsill cooling.
Uh, we would have split one.
That's what the bear...
Not greedy.
Can't put them on the windowsill, because yoga yoga come by.
Yeah.
Okay, um, so we're going to move on. So we're, we've agreed that we'll be ready to, to move forward on this in two weeks' time? Go ahead, Mike.
Is this going to be an agenda item again, or is this something you're going to just go through you to the planning commission?
I think that our select board just needs to provide feedback to me, and I'll provide it to Frank Johnson. And, I mean, you can deal with Frank directly if you want, but just make sure I'm in a loop, so that we have one focal, so that somebody, you know, so that we have a, a center of gravity, so to speak, so that we don't have, we have one axle. We can have different spokes, but one axle, so to speak. Okay?
You shouldn't have to be at one time talking about town business, you're good.
Yeah. Okay.
Should it be on the, should it be on the agenda for the next time? So we're going to approve it or disapprove it?
We can't approve it until we get a final version, and then we have to have a public hearing.
Okay.
So what we can do is, within two weeks' time, we can provide feedback back to the , um, planning commission. I don't think that needs to be on the agenda, does it?
No.
What do you think, Mr. Parliamentarian? That doesn't need to be an agenda item, does it?
I think it has to be an agenda item if we're going to discuss it on the agenda.
I would think that it should be on the agenda, too, because what if Mark comes up with some off-the-wall idea and gives it to you, and the planning commission runs with it, and we haven't had a chance to discuss it, and then we get it back and we disagree again?
Good point. So we'll collect all our thoughts together into one thing, and then we'll discuss that at the next meeting as an agenda item.
Yep.
And then agree on what we're going to provide for feedback to the planning commission.
I think that's the best...
That makes sense. Okay, that's what we'll do.
You'll get those changes to us before the night of the meeting, all right?
As long as I get them from you guys, and sufficient time to do that.
I got one already.
Well, you all have my email address. You can either do that or give me a call, or...
It's just a misspelling. I opened it and there it was.
I'm sure you might, you might find two.
I'm sure I'll find more than one.
Okay, so we're going to move on now to, uh, the McGee Ford 2024 F-350 for the fire department. Mike, you're up.
So, um, after discussion with McGee Ford and Motte Fielder regarding the difference in the price on the two invoices, um, I think we're talking apples and oranges with, uh, McGee Ford, because the, the sticker and, or the, the bid sheets that we had, the spec sheets for the truck, showed that there was a tow package, and when I questioned the tow package and said, "How do you tow a vehicle without the Reese hitch?", there was crickets for a little bit, and then there, they made a couple excuses, and I, I think there was a couple of the select board members, including the fire chief, too, have reviewed this, and I think that we, the $800 is supposed to include those, those pieces of equipment on that truck, which we didn't get, and that we hold off on paying it until we get an answer from, not only from McGee Ford, but through the state contract rep, which they're having difficulty getting a hold of. Um, because I know, I talked to the fire chief, and, um, I asked him if he discussed the, the package with the state contract rep and about, and using, we're using the vehicle to tow, and he did. So it's just, and, and I think there's a couple of select board members that have researched this as well, but I think that it's, we hold off on paying him until...
Yeah, I don't understand why you get all the tow package stuff, but not a hitch. That doesn't really make any sense to me at all, but...
And I'll, I didn't ask the question if there was a hitch when you ordered a tow...
Yeah, I mean, logically.
Let me make sure I understand this. We did order it with brake controller and...
Yeah, brake control and the sway bars are all on the truck.
And, uh, no Reese hitch.
There's no Reese hitch on it. Oh, there's no wiring to the rear for the trailer cordia.
Yeah, so it's not really a towing package.
The way I read it, the towing package does not include the Reese hitch and the wiring, because those are standard equipment. You can't buy the truck, the way I understand it, you cannot buy that truck without the hitch, they all come with it.
Except for the one we got.
Except for the one we got.
And even the ambulance, or the, it's not an ambulance, the plow prep package we ordered with it, because it gives you the dual alternators because of all the lights and stuff on the truck, that's on it. But...
I'd be willing to bet, if you look where that hitch bolts in, there was one there at one time.
I couldn't, we looked under there, and I couldn't say one way or the other, but...
Well, I do agree with our town manager and our fire chief that we shouldn't pay this until it's right.
And the, so, so the select board knows, the chief had to buy those pieces of equipment to put on the truck, so that it can be used once the, the, um, the bed was put on it, so...
So the bed should be finished putting on it, and they could build the, the tailboard
So, the bed should be finished putting on it, and they could build the, the tailboard into the hitch.
Around it, yeah. We've purchased, we just want them to honor what that cost would be, and take it off the price of the truck.
So, you went and bought the hitch and the receiver and the wiring harness?
Yeah.
To have our guy put it on when we put the bed on?
Yeah, no, cause I wasn't gonna hold, pull it, leave his garage full of truck, where we bought with McGee Ford.
Okay.
Actually, I bought the, the wiring harness out of my own pocket, cause nobody around here can get one. So, I had to go on E. Trailers to get one sent in. It's supposed to be here tomorrow.
Getting reimbursed, I trust.
Well, it probably will, somewhere.
Yeah, just bring me the receipt.
So, we're gonna move on. So, at this point, let me know when it's right, and then we'll be happy to take care of you, okay? Now, we're gonna talk about maintenance of private roads. I read the email, and I, is, uh, is our highway foreman on tonight?
No.
I don't see him. So, you wanna speak to this at all, Mike, or?
I, I would, um, cause it's just, it's getting out of hand, um, what they're doing to the road up there. Not that they haven't been doing it for a period of time, but the trenches they're digging are deeper now. Um, I'm not sure if it's a trench for water, or if they're trying to make their own, like, slowdown, um, statement to anybody on the road that's on the, beyond them.
You're talking about residents are doing this?
They are, correct. Uh, Cedar Mountain Road. And so, now, we're coming into winter with plowing, and it's, it's always an issue with what they do up there as far as digging in the road. Uh, they don't want water going on their, onto their property. That's one of the reasons why they're digging into the road. And there's no, there's very little place to make ditches up there, cause if you travel, in some areas, they got mound system, like, right tight to the road. They've built, um, structures right tight to the road. And when, I sent a letter to some folks about three years ago, um, they basically said it's private property. You can't tell us what to do.
So, are they digging on the town part? Cause not all of that is town, right?
No, they're digging on the private part.
Have we ever actually resolved how much of that is town, and how much is not?
Oh, no. Oh, no, that's, uh, so, we, yeah, I think you remember probably the story, there was two attorneys that looked at it, and they both came up with a different answer. So, we don't really know, but from a legal opinion, where town road ends and private road starts. Lots of myth, lore, uh, out there. But this is happening beyond where those two points that the attorneys felt the, a town road ended anyway. And, um, and I, I believe this, if we were to look in minutes from back when Jeff Grady was on the, the select board, so we're going back a few years, um, that the town had made a, a decision, the select board had made a decision to not maintain town roads, and then that was kind of abandoned, um, because somebody had friends that may have lived up there, blah, 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 um, whatever the home cooking that happened. And they, so, now, we're back at, we get a lot of complaints about Cedar Mountain Road, whether it's trees hanging over the road, whether it's, um, not being graded, et cetera. But it's private road, and then they go and they build stuff that makes it hard, cause that young lad over there, um, plows up there, and it's already tight to get through there. That mean, the telephone, the scars in the telephone poles and the pine trees will tell you that. Um, and then when they start building stuff and narrowing it up, it makes it more and more difficult. So, I don't know what the, the select board would like to do on this, and I doubt a sit, you know, decision will be made tonight, but, um, to, for me to reach out to those residents on that road that we know is private, and.
Is there a spot to turn a plow truck around right shortly after the last spot that the lawyers had said was ours?
Yes, if you, if the first spot by Doran's family residence there is Yellow Finch, but there's no, where you gonna push the snow to? You're gonna push the snow on the way in, then you're gonna stop at Yellow Finch to turn around, we gotta have a place to put the snow. So, the reason, and I believe, you know, this, the, again, myth, lore, um, was, if the town's plowing, there's no place to turn around, and unless we get to the end of the road, we just plowed it all the way to the end, and, um, and the people at the end of the road allowed us to turn around there and push the snow up there.
Why are we plowing private roads?
That's, the question is, um, you know, why are we, cause, and we grade, and the people that live on Avalon Beach Road had, see the grader up on Cedar Mountain Road and call and say, "How come you not grading my road?". So, it just create, there's a lot, but I don't know, after how many years, Heath, that we've been doing this? You know, we're talking decades, um, that we've been doing this, and how do you stop that now, um, without proper notification? Cause what I, what I was told, and I haven't seen the minutes of this, was that the, the select board had agreed to not do it, um, and give one year, basically a year's notice for them to figure out how they, who was gonna come over and take over for them, to plow or grade, or whatever it might be. And it just never happened. Could it see? What other, is that the only town road that's, or private road that we're taking care of? What's the other one? I can't remember off the top of my head.
The one out, uh, Frisbee Hill.
Sugar Road?
No. Used to be Duck Road, but the first one up on it.
Oh, yeah, by the highway?
Yeah, I remember down there by the highway.
So, I mean, it's resources. I don't, I don't, I don't know how we stopped doing.
Why are we maintaining that one?
I don't know. This is something that is way, way before my time. I don't know what the reasoning is, Rob, sorry.
Is that road one pass with a plow or two?
Higgins. Higgins, that's the other one. What's that, Mike?
Cedar Mountain Road, is it one pass with a plow or two?
Uh, it's like, one and a half. From Yellow Finch out, you can't really run the wing, cause you're into the, like Mike said, you're into the trees and the telephone poles and.
So, could you go up to the end of the road, turn around, and then plow on your way So, you'd eliminate a snow pile where you stop plowing when you hit private road.
Well, you turn around at Yellow Finch and back ten feet up the road and plow out too.
Right. I mean, it would seem to me that we'd either have to have a discussion with them.
We either need to maintain all the private roads, or we need to maintain none.
Right. We're either gonna take that over, and they're gonna not do their self-styled ditches, or?
Can we, with any degree of confidence, say what is town road and what isn't on Cedar Mountain?
The, the only confidence I would have is that, is there's, the attorneys look, come up with different answers, and you go, they're saying they were the farthest one, and.
What are the two answers?
One is, uh, but, just passed by Doran's, and the other one was, but, just past the Culvert. And, um, there was a place that the town used to push or turn around, and then something got built there, correct?
That was before the.
Yeah.
That we've always plowed all the way to the end.
I've always heard that we, the town owned it to the Red Barn, which is, I think, like your.
Doran's.
Goldfinch Road.
Yeah.
Right, is it Goldfinch?
Just, just for the Yellow Finch.
Goldfinch is down over the hill from that, is on the left, but. How do you plow to the Red Barn and then stop? You don't do that.
Yeah.
How do you plow to the end and not plow every other private road?
I understand that. But it's only private a certain ways. The town owns it to the Red Barn.
Well, that's where you stop.
The Red Barn that?
Can't do that, Mary.
Why can't you?
Bob Morin's house?
There's a Red Barn that's like.
Doran's Family.
If it fell over, it'd be.
Family Homestead. The little red garage right, Doran's Family Homestead.
It's on the lakeside, right? That's the one I'm thinking of, it's right next to the road.
Where you get the bobs. You come across, go past the state park, beach, right there, before you go down to the lake again, that little red barn sits right, right next to the road, that's Doran's, used to be the Doran Family Home. Doran's still owning it.
So, just before Bob Morin's?
Yeah, a little ways before Bob Morin's.
Hundred yard, couple hundred yards.
Yeah, exactly.
So, we're plowing a lot of road. I thought we were talking a hundred yards again.
We are, no. We're playing, we're, we're paving more private road than we are.
Wasn't it one time that he also said to where the road went across, the full bridge? I've heard that too.
Lemmy's come, used to come down there, right?
Yeah, where you, the bypass road to full bridge was, which is out by John Durfey's. So, I've heard that one over the years.
That would make more sense to me, cause the town used to drive over that road, they'd have to plow it. But I don't know where the, we're gonna find that, that information.
At this point, I guess we need to decide, if we're gonna plow that road, then the residents need to be aware that they can't put water bars in it. And if they're gonna put water bars in it, then we have to decide whether or not we're gonna plow the road. In any case, we shouldn't be running the grader up there if we can turn it around on Goldfinch. Do we run the grader all the way up to the end, to the turnaround at the end? You could turn the grader around at Goldfinch, couldn't you?
You'd turn it around at Yellow Finch.
Could you get the snow off the road there?
Leave it in the road and take it with you when you leave.
I guess we have to give some thought to this, so you know where I'm going with this.
I don't like where you're going with this.
Well, we can't have it both ways.
Yeah, we can both ways.
Well, my question is, if you're going to do this private road, aren't you obligated to do other private roads?
That's the, that's the, uh.
Opening the Pandora.
That's the box I don't wanna open, yes.
It's not all private though, Mary Lee. It's not all private.
But where it starts to be private, it shouldn't be any different than if I had a road that went up the hill.
The majority is private.
Majority of it is, yeah.
Yeah. Like, the first third of Cedar Mountain Road is public road, and the rest of it is a private road. And I did not know we were maintaining another private road.
Two others.
Two others, as you say.
Two others?
Gump and Higgins.
Gump as well?
We made, they made a deal years ago to maintain Gump.
The crafts from Dollar General?
We, they made the deal years ago to maintain Gump, because it had a sewer manhole down on the end of it, and they made a deal with Andy Graziano years ago, so they could use the road to go down to the sewer road, that they would maintain it. But that road's never been, that's a private road.
And then the other one off Frisbee Hill, is that the one we had the trailer fire on years ago?
Yeah.
Now, what's the reasoning for that, Heath, real quick?
Years ago, my understanding, that's before me, they had a handicap kid down in there, and they used to go down in there with the school bus. So, the town started maintaining it for the school bus, and then it, they were, I'm pretty sure there was a lawsuit, what I was told, Charlie Perry, sued one, sued the other, to keep the town maintaining it after the school bus stopped going down there.
I guess we gotta get some history on that one.
Don't look so enthused, Mike.
Oh, no, cause I just know that, you know, I'll be digging through boxes for, well, I'll be probably retired by that time, so. We'll keep, we'll just keep plowing until I retire.
That's kind of a bunch of what's attitude they took with Cedar Mountain over the years.
Yeah, I know. John Burke was one of the attorneys.
I think that all, the, all, all five members of the board should go tour these private roads. Do you know which ones we're talking about?
Yeah.
And take a look for ourselves, so we can actually see them, so that the next time we talk about them, we know what's going on. And the one thing I would also look at is, what would it take to cease plowing beyond Goldfinch on Cedar Mountain Road? Now, I think, to be fair to the residents, we can't just not do that.
No.
Without any notice, but I think that, you know, we need to resolve this issue, because it's been ongoing for decades.
Or what would it take to bring that up to take it over as a town road? Is that something we're not interested in looking into?
We got deep pockets, I think that would be on, between the water issues.
No, not us taking it, like, if they brought it up to a certain spec, and then we'll continue to take care of it.
Well, we've done that, we do that with other things, and, you know, as long as it comes up to.
Cause if somebody, like, for example, wasn't there talk about, you know, behind Paul's Pizza? If they brought that up to a certain spec, we would take care of it?
Yes.
So, maybe that's what we should look into with the rest of these private roads that are currently being maintained. If you guys would like to keep this road maintained, you need to bring it up to a certain spec and hand it over to the town.
Exactly what we did with Wittered Way. The town, the town plows that, don't they? Wittered Way and Witter North and Witter South?
Yeah, there's precedent for that, and I'm certainly willing to have that conversation, but I think you're spot on, Bob, for Rob.
I think that's, I think that's the fair thing to do to everybody, for everybody. It still keeps them the option of the town maintaining their road, but it also makes it so that we're not maintaining private roads that aren't up to spec anymore.
So, we're agreed, we're all gonna go look at the roads, the three roads in question now, and then, just so we know what the lay of the land looks like, if we haven't been up there.
So, we're looking at Cedar Mountain, beyond the Doran Homestead.
Correct.
And then.
Gump Road.
Gump Road, if, if we have to maintain our sewer line down there.
Now, if we made a deal there, then we made a deal, and we should honor it. Now, and then.
And then the other one, what is the name of that? It's the first.
Higgins.
Higgins, that's the first turn on the left off.
Frisbee Hill.
Frisbee Hill.
Not very long after you turn onto Frisbee Hill.
I, I would probably err, wanna be cautious about the Gump Road one, too. What, technically, what we should do is, we should get an easement to get to our, if we're going through private property, if there's already not one done, because if this deal ever falls apart, and we don't have legal right to get through it, um, we should do something so it's a writing, you know, to get to that.
Yeah, cause the landowner could just say, "See ya, you're out at any time."
Moose. Yeah. Yeah.
We've got some homework to do.
Yeah, unfortunately, I do. You don't have enough to do anyway, Mike.
I know. I just wait for you to come in and give me something to do.
We have a little bit of homework to do. You have a little more than that.
Alrighty.
So, I'm gonna move on, unless there's something else the board needs to discuss on this.
What, what did we, in the meantime, what direction did we give Mike or the highway foreman for them not to be digging ditches across the road? Are we just gonna put up with it for a little bit longer, or you're gonna put a cease and desist order on these people?
We have, and they just keep doing it.
But you can't do anything, cause we don't, we don't have any control over it. It's not us.
We actually don't have any jurisdiction to tell them to cease and desist.
They grade the road, you're right back there.
What bothers me is they go and do this, but then, if it snows, they wanna know where the town is to plow their road.
Which is what we're trying to work out.
Probably one of the first ones to call to.
That's what bothers me.
I agree. It bothers me too.
Yeah.
But we're, we're gonna have to figure out how to resolve this, and I think you know what direction I'm heading in.
Yeah.
But we can't do that without proper warning. Okay, now I'm gonna move on. Okay, here's a little light reading, the draft version of the 25-26 operating budget. I think there's some things that aren't in here, Mike, I was looking at this today.
Yeah.
And that's correct, that is an accurate statement?
There are not, things that are not in there?
Yeah.
Such as?
Well, the, I don't know, it seems like, uh, an increase of, what is it, 2.3% or 2.6%?
No, there's, well...
Is that actually good news, if that's realistic?
Well, it, I think it's very close to being realistic, um, the, the, the Police Department, um, I spoke with Justin tonight, I don't, I don't think that... I think what, what happened last year is they were one ahead on their steps, so we actually, they actually, instead of being like step two, they're, we paid them at step three. So, once I, once we kind of sit down tomorrow and, and hash that out, it might be a recommendation is you got your, you got your step raised last year, but you'll get your coal to raise this year. So that, until I meet with Justin, uh, to go over that, um, I'm not sure. But, um, ow, you hear that? You heard it over there?
It's all that homework you're thinking about, so...
Um, the, uh... And then, the other thing was, um, the, the only thing that's in here for, for increases to the non-union employees, which is few, um, is a coal raise of, and I don't have, remember, we're doing 75% of, for the, for the union employees, it's 75% of the Consumer Price Index for New England as of the end of November. We won't see those numbers until middle to late December, to be able to actually see where that, where it lands. But I, it was 3.4 right now, which is 2.55 is the 75% of that. So, this, the 2.55 is just a placeholder until we get the real numbers.
Is that what you have in here now?
2.55, correct. Um, so, it's, it's trending down, uh, over the last couple months, so it might be continued trending downward. Uh, and remember, the Police Department can't go below 2 anyway.
So the increase of 2.9% isn't too far off the mark?
I don't think, I, you know, based upon what I've, and this is, this is a beast as far as, what you're not seeing is the multiple tabs at the bottom of this for every department, so it's reading from cells from other tabs, and it's a bear. I know, send a B word, um, but it's a bear. So, I'm, I need to go back through and make sure all the formulas are reading from the correct places, and I did that till my eyes were crossed. So, um, but I think it's pretty accurate, minus the PD numbers, the Consumer Price Index numbers, and the passive insurance. So, we haven't got the new number for the, uh, insurance, liability insurance. Um, but I was talking with Mark Brown the other day, when I was going through the numbers that they sent me, sent a chart for buildings, vehicles, uh, crime, all this stuff that they're looking to update on, and payroll. And we were, what I would say, severely underinsured for contents of buildings. For example, they had $30,000 was the worth of the contents of the fire station. So, where that number came from, I don't know, um, it's not something I gave them. And so, if, if I just sort of blindly or, uh, just submitted this, um, $30,000 for contents, it was not just this building, there was other ones, too. And so, if that's what our insurance was based on last year, it's not gonna be based on that going forward, because it, we're underinsured. So, th- there could be an increase to the liability insurance, but passive is a pool. So, we're the last ones, we're the, the last person that hasn't turned that in right now. Um, but I, I wanna make sure what I turned into them is, is accurate. Um, and that's accurate as far as, like, what I can find out in my, you know, either my, my scientific, my swag, um, or I've called people and asking them questions. So, I'm thinking that we're underinsured, and that's gonna raise our rates, but it goes into a pool, so I don't really know how it's gonna, the formula will figure out at the end. But, it stands to reason that if you raise it quite a bit, you're probably gonna pay a little bit more. So that could go up, too, Dick. And then, the other thing that I kind of built, I kind of tucked it in here, was the payroll tax that everyone has to pay now, or we've got to pay. And that was, um, about $4,400 annually, right now, at this point, based on our payroll. So I had to kind of build that in there, 'cause there's no actual budget line for that. So, that's, and if you notice, a lot of these are zero, flatlined, um, or a little bit of an increase. And that was just with wages benefits, 'cause there was a 14% increase in healthcare, or health insurance. Um, there was a little bit on the vision and dental. So, those were built into this as well. Um, so, I was like, I think it was $124,000 was the increase. If I could look, I guess, since I built it, I can find it.
Yes, you're correct.
124, 611.
Yeah, three, or 2.9%.
Yep.
And, um, but that could change based upon, you know, those other things, but, um, that's a low number, $124,000. We've only done that one other time in the last six years, so...
And that's without adding the additional funding, right, on the last page for the...
Yeah, it's, so, the difference, if you, if the board considers, uh, increasing the reserves for, uh, the Fire Department, the Highway Department...
Paving.
And the paving, which, which you have those spreadsheets I gave you, um, you're talking about a $200,000 increase, added to that 124, and I, that'd be 324, uh, 611. At a 7.6% increase. But, I, I just, I'm not preaching to the choir, I, I just, you saw the numbers, and if we, if we ignore this, the problem's gonna get worse.
Mm-hmm.
Um, our roads, some of our roads are really starting to get in need of, we're, I'd rather be able to resurface a road with a shim and overlay than have to reclaim a road, 'cause it got to the point where you can't do that anymore to it, which is way more expensive. And, so, I just...
If we can afford the cheaper version, then the more expensive version isn't gonna happen.
Yeah, exactly, that's, that's how my brain works, too, I'm like, yeah, you know, if you don't, if you don't do it, and it costs more in the long run, and we can't afford the, the quick fix, we're not gonna, certainly...
I'm really disappointed that we didn't have more people show up to that special meeting that we had about that.
Yeah, we did the, we did the meeting in June, as you all remember, just to get this out.
I'm really disappointed, because I know people are gonna squawk about that, but...
I think there's some marketing, we have to, I think, we're gonna have to go on a little bit of a marketing campaign, if you choose to go that route, to explain to people the situation. And, and not that it'll matter, you know, you made a comment, Rob, and I played the, you know, you made it in public, so, um, is that when you were young and you voted, if, if anything was up, you voted no. And that's kind of what happens. I, I think it still happens, um, not by you, I'm saying, but, you know, out, people out there. But, that mentality will get us to a point where we're gonna spike a budget at some point, we're gonna borrow money from a bank to fix all this stuff, and then we're gonna have a payment on it, we're gonna pay interest on it.
And then you don't have any choice but to put it in the budget?
Yeah.
It's not a question, it's, this is it.
And it'll be the more expensive version of putting in the budget.
I had somebody talk to me recently that suggested, since we had upgraded all our fire department equipment, we could remove that line from the budget for, for reserve accounts for fire trucks. And I explained to them how much fire trucks cost, and the fact that we're gonna have to replace one in about 10 years' time. It will not be cheap, will it, chief? No, it's probably gonna be close to a million bucks to replace that truck.
That's what, that's what Jim told us today, that by the time we replace it, a million dollars for that, that engine.
So, anyways, um...
Where are you?
So, Cindy L., Council Resident, and 40 years' fire service, and, and National Representative in Fire Service. The, what's, what's scaring us on a national level right now is that you cannot get a fire truck in under two years' time. Manufacturers, they're now talking, and we'll learn more at our, our last national conference next month, but they're looking at that actually staying up to three to four years' time within the next year of being able to acquire a brand-new fire engine, fire truck, any piece of fire apparatus. So we're either gonna be forced to look at refurbishing in the future, which is what more and more townships and municipalities, major municipalities are having to go to this as well, that have huge budgets. But manufacturers can only manufacture so much, there's only so much raw material out, so many engines, so many chassis, et cetera, available nationally in the United States right now, and that trend is getting worse.
Jim, Jim told us today, Jim Harris at Harab, it's gonna be three years, and Rutland City just got a truck back refurbished, was a 2001, refurbished to a 24, and they paid s... About $800,000, half of what it costs for a new one.
Yeah, that is absolutely correct.
And it's like, children...
We're looking at this with everything, and, you know, we could be talking about the Highway Department, and it's gonna be the same story.
Yeah.
You know, this, this equipment wears out, people want services, they want the roads to be clear of snow and potholes, and, uh, the cost of doing that keeps going up. But, as you said, the cost of not doing it becomes more expensive, and, you know, we have to make a decision on what kind of community we wanna live in. You know, when you go on vacation, you don't go to a community that doesn't have services, you don't go to someplace to vacation where you can't get down the roads, and the library's closed, and there's broken windows everywhere, you know? We have to maintain a nice place to live. And, uh, our police budget's high compared to other communities our size, but our crime is lower compared to a lot of communities our size. And, and I think people have to think about that, you know, it's not how much you're spending, but what are you getting for what you spend? And, and we have a really nice community here, and unfortunately, it costs a lot to maintain it.
Well, I will say this, though, 2.9% is a great place to start, it could've been a lot uglier.
Yeah.
So, we have some decisions to make, and we all know what, in general terms, what they are. However, I do think that we all need to actually take a good, hard look at this to see if we have any suggestions for Mike, that what needs to be more, or what could be less. And, um, but whatever we come up with, I think, needs to be realistic, it can't be, you know, let's just pick a number and start cutting the budget, because as we know, a level-funded budget is actually a cut. So, it's more homework to do.
Whatever, if anybody wants to sit down and go over anything one-on-one, I'm certainly available to do that, and kind of explain where the, where the numbers come from, the history, I can, there is some stuff, this, this sheet doesn't show it, uh, the history of the actuals, 'cause they're, this isn't, these didn't get populated, but, um, I can show you what the history is on it. You know, so, is it, you know, we're not trending like, oh, you just wanna fluff this thing up, and there's, uh, over six years, I think we've trimmed this thing back and back and back, and...
Yeah, I think from reading through some of this, too, where you're using reserve funds or the ARPA funds and stuff like that, if that stuff wasn't there, then it would've been significantly higher up to this point. So, you can't keep finding extra money hidden under a rock and expect it to always be there, too, so...
Yeah, we used one-time money where we could to soften the blow, but that's, at best, all it does.
The blow's still coming at some point, and it's kind of...
It softens it, it doesn't hit its hard, but it still hits.
Where it hits is gonna be at the ballots, because last year, with the, with the education component up, and the town budget up, the same amount was like 14%.
Yeah.
Um, and the 14% was kind of artificial because of the ARPA funds that were used to pay the paving and the, and the gravel. If you would've taken that out of the budget, it was like a, like a 6% increase versus a 14% increase.
Mm-hmm.
So we all got some hard decisions to make. Anything else on the budget before we move on?
So, we're gonna discuss this at the next meeting.
In the, yeah, in the meantime, I'm going to assign everyone a homework, they have to look this over if they haven't already done so, and if there's any suggestions to, uh, improve this, or streamline it, or help, whether it's up or down, does it, it's still a conversation we need to have, that we do that, and then provide feedback to the town manager, if you have any. And then, uh, next, in the next meeting, can you have a new version, if necessary? That we can, you know, have it available Friday before the meeting, so we have an opportunity to look at it. And then if, we'll have another meeting, because this budget typically takes a couple months to build.
I would imagine.
And if we all put some effort into it, then we can make it easier for this guy to create something we can all stand behind.
I mean, 2.9 is not unrealistic for the amount that the wages have gone up, and the insurances and all that have gone up, that's...
Like I said before, it's a great place to start.
Yeah, I'm pretty surprised by that, I was expecting a lot, lot worse.
I, I would ask that you, one of the things, Mr. Chairman, that you consider, I think, in the note I sent to you, was the insurance buyout. The insurance is now 30, for a family plan, it's like $29,000 our share. I would, I would encourage you to up the insurance buyout, 'cause I got two people on the fence about this, and that if it goes from 5,000 to something above 5,000, I put 8,000 in there, entices them to take it, we save $18,000 an individual, you know?
Would that enable you to attract more employees?
I think it, it's, it gets people talking about, to their spouse or their significant other, saying, if you get to, for your employment, how much could, could we, you know, maybe we could save some money, and it gives, that's what's happening right now with two employees.
Do they have to provide proof of insurance someplace else?
They do.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, so, I mean, if for an employee that saves the town 18 grand or so, or by not taking, I think, I, I broke it down, it's like, for, by a single plan, a two-person plan, and a family plan, maybe you say 5,000 for a single plan, 6,000 for a two-person plan, 7,000 for, you know, make it...
What are we at now, five across the board?
Yeah. So if you, whether you take a single plan and save X amount, like, $8,000, or you take a family plan, or take the buyout, where you were gonna get a family plan, you'd be saving $18,000 to the town.
And if it's a tool that you could use to attract more employees, then we should have that conversation.
Yeah, and, and you look, it's built, it's already built into the budget, so the number you're looking at, 2.9, already has it built in, 'cause I just wanted to show you what it'll look like.
Right, there's probably a lot of waste there, where you have duplicate coverage with spouses.
Mm-hmm. And they can, they can take, not take the health insurance, but still take the, the dental and the vision, so for somebody who has a spouse, that they can get their, uh, health insurance through, and get, take $8,000, and then, they, maybe the spouse's coverage doesn't have vision and dental, they can get it through the town at a pretty cheap rate. But, because if you get the healthcare, it's included. And, and there's no premium payment to the, to the, um...
That's a win-win for both sides.
Yeah, it's, it's certainly, I got two, two people talking about it right now, and I'm trying to, like, hold off, I've got the, you know, see what you, what you want to do.
Can you, one more thing for Mike to do, um, come up with a, with a proposal of what you think you'd like to see for an insurance buyout that you would like our approval on?
Sure, I can do that.
See where we're going with this.
I do, I do.
Just maybe we can get...
Let's get it over and done with?
Yeah, and maybe we'll give him the tools he needs to attract a better driver, or a better weightlifter, or whatever it is you're looking for, you know, person.
Or a single person?
I don't think, a mechanic?
Anybody?
Well, you know, I, I don't wanna speak specifically, because, you know, that's...
That's back out for Ben, just...
Yeah, we always, we always seem to have a need for good people, so... And we're not the only employer out there that has a need for good people.
Those questions are being asked, Mr. Chairman, when, when we interview people, they, they're like, what do I get for time off, what's the benefits, you know, that kind of stuff, it's...
Mr. Blow, thank you very much for having your students attend.
Appreciate it, it's already crowded the place a little, but, uh...
It's been a little warmer in here, thank you.
We had something that...
Mike, I'll call you Wednesday morning around 10:15, okay? You guys will put you on speaker, like always, and follow up, whatever. I appreciate you enduring us.
Nice to have you all with us.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Glad to see the interest, thank you for coming, everybody.
Really, stop talking so we can leave.
Yeah.
So, if we're done with the budget, we're gonna move on? We're gonna talk about the security of our, um, ARPA funds and reserve funds? You're up, Mike.
Great. Uh, so, this is a carryover from the last meeting, um, since that point, we did meet with two different banks. Um, one was, uh, Bar Harbor, and MNT? Or TD, which, I think, MNT, the TD was the one that has the problem, right?
TD was the one that had the issue.
So we've met with them, I met the treasurer, myself, um, there are many options out there to diversify some of the funds and keep it, I found out it was $250,000 FDIC, not 800 something.
Right, 250.
Yeah, 250. So, um, I think there was a number 800 thrown around last meeting, it probably came from me, so I'll slap myself for saying that. Um, but, uh, so we're, we're looking at different options, and, uh, one is the fluidity, or can, we can get our money out if we need it. Uh, ARPA is one of those things that changes, when you, if you authorize expenditure of ARPA, um, you know, we wanna be able to get that money out and not be tied up for a period of time, a long period of time. So, uh, we're not through doing our exploration on this, um, but I, I believe, after the talking to the first two, that by next meeting, we'll have a proposal, you know, what, what the treasurer's looking at for, uh, protecting our money, and getting the most out of that money, uh, back into our, you know, through interest and something like that, so... 'Cause they talked, they talked to us about CDs, they talked to us about, um, these sweeps, um, ICS sweeps, or something like that. Um, so, my, I got, I took notes and had to ask a lot of questions, 'cause I'm not...
Casino, taking it to the casino?
That, it's not a good one. I was trying for you. I'll give it the old try, um, but, yeah, so, but I just wanted to let you, just give you an update that we have met with a couple banks. We got one more to meet with, and, um, you know, come up with something that protects our money, something you hopefully can get on board with. So, so I don't have anything to say, we've solved it, but we're moving toward the solution.
So we still have exposure at this point?
Yeah.
The possibility of exposure.
And I, and I, it got me, as I've been talking with them, how many towns don't understand this, and they've got their money in these accounts, and that they're, they're underprotected, and, um, you know, there's, there's ways to make money off this money, um, and be, have, have it fluid, so we can get to it if we need it.
They really don't want us to have a bunch of it vanish.
Yeah, I know, yeah.
That would be...
Have what?
Have it vanish.
Yeah, it's, it's not hardly likely, but, um, it's probable. But, possible, but not prob, possible, but not probable. Yeah, it's probable, it's gonna happen.
It's a significant difference there.
Very, very, very low risk, high consequence.
Yeah.
Yes.
So, all right, sorry.
It's pretty accurate, Mark.
Ben, unless you have any more questions, that's my sales pitch.
You're putting effort into it, that's what's important. Okay, errors and admissions?
I asked Mary Jo if she was gonna be on, she said, "Do you need me?", I said, "Probably not", but I think Mr. Mealy was on, he is, and, uh, he is, one of these are his.
Looks like it was just a clerical error.
Yes, but, um, the board knows you're on, Mr. Mealy, so, can you stand by? Um, yeah, property split transfer error, this is cler, this is truly clerical, more clerical issues?
Exactly.
So, I think Mr. Mealy's been patient.
Basically, if we approve Form Number PBR 4261-E as presented, that should satisfy the requirements?
That is it? And there's a, and the, the town clerk has to sign off on it, but other than that, that's it? And there's, oh, no, you guys have to sign on the back page, below, um, Board of Selectmen or Aldermen on the right side? Yeah. And there may be, there may be, the original may be in there, I'm not sure.
It's probably in the... It's probably in the, I think it's in here.
So this is what Mary Jo suggests we do?
Mm-hmm.
And Mr. Mealy, this is, resolves it to your satisfaction as well?
Yes, it does, yes.
So do we need to make a motion?
Correct.
I would make a motion that we accept Form PVR-4261-E Errors and Admissions Certificate to correct the parcel split of Mr. and Mrs. Mealy.
It's been moved and seconded, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
You're welcome, Mr. Mealy.
Pass that around.
Please do. There, there was no update, a written update from the reappraisers, but they did say to me that, you know, they're still making appointments, still on track. There was a little bit of communication issue between them and Mary Jo and I met with them and Mary Jo and I believe that's been resolved. At least it was to our satisfaction when we stopped talking.
While we're signing this, we can discuss the proposal from Lexipol for the American Firefighters Grant Preparation and Submission for the Fire Department. So this is the company that...
Did it last year.
Did it last year?
Last couple years, actually.
And you're happy with their performance?
Last year's was super. They did a good job for us last year.
And you were going to apply for the same stuff this year, up your chances, right?
They applied for grants for you last year.
Yeah.
And were you successful?
No. The letter we got back from said there were so many departments that it replayed multiple times and that was our first time for applying for our gear is what took us out of the room.
You were specifically...
Is this for one specific grant?
This is the AFG grant.
How much is that one for?
It was 100 and, around 150,000 last year.
It was actually two things, it was going to get gear caught up to standards and it was going to purchase a gear extractor. So it was basically a washing machine, but it, it was a fire department one that would extract the chemicals out of the gear the right way.
And how much was it last year?
I could look it up, it was over 100,000, it was...
No, the cost of Lexipol services.
Thirty, it's in the, it's there.
It's the same price it did, they gave us...
They give us a discount.
Discount.
Last year they did it for free, right?
Last year was for free.
Because they, the first year, they kind of screwed up, so they agreed to do it on, you know, good faith, to do it last year for free.
So they've done it two years in a row?
In the first year, it didn't get considered because of the errors that were put into it. So we only have really one shot at it.
We were trying for the, the first year, we were trying for SEBA and they put it all under, they put the total cost of the fund under one, so it looked like one set of SEBA was going to cost 100,000, whatever it was. So that was a clerical error on their, their part and they did it this year to, for free to make up. They didn't say...
But whoever did it this, the past year, knew what they were doing, that's for damn sure.
You feel confident in that?
Yeah, I think, I think they, they would be the better critics than me because...
They had a, they had a ex-chief that actually was on the board for the AFG grant that read it, he was very good.
Just doesn't inspire a lot of confidence when they make a clerical error the first year.
Yeah.
And then you're not successful the next year. I mean, I, I get how that works, it often takes a while.
But the...
When I wrote the grant for that tanker, I think it took four years? A long time.
It was three, I think it was three on the extrication appointment.
Yeah, it was a three-year, remember that, the extrication was, it was three years?
The first round of the air packs you did was a couple, three years.
But you feel really confident that this company...
They did an excellent job and it seems like Tabitha, the girl we worked with out there, she really put the extra effort into it. Where the first year, we weren't impressed with who we were working with anyways and then we had the clerical error, but it seems like they've done, this last year, they did a super job. We would have never done it that good, we would have never got it done.
Right, that's the hard part.
We don't have the time to get it done. It takes a lot of time.
Well, the good thing about, the good thing this year is it's the same, it's demographic and your call volume, all that, it's not a lot to update besides beefing up your, your reasoning. But, because it's, you know, a lot of that stuff's still the same, still the same town, still the same infrastructure, you know, there's, there's going to be some stuff that's not going to be a heavy lift, but...
This grant is for PPE?
PPE and the extra extractor.
Where would this money come from?
Out of his budget.
It was budgeted.
It would be out of his budget.
And then it, the five, it would cost 5% of the, the cost of the grant, whatever it is, right? We have to pay the 5%. But we, that's in your budget.
Not to Lexipol.
No, just for...
To match, okay.
To match, if we got it, you'd have to pay 5% of it.
We did build that into the budget.
I would make a motion that we approve $2,450 to Lexipol for grant writing services for the Assistant Firefighter Grant Application. With the caveat that if it's not successful and I happen to be here next year, I probably wouldn't vote for it.
Got to have the dollar amount in there, no markup.
He did.
He did?
I did, yeah.
Okay, I didn't hear that.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Hi. Mike, this is for your signature, not mine.
Yep, I got it.
So we can move on to manager's report.
Which you don't have.
Which I do not, did not get a report.
I didn't, I ran out of sleep time.
Good.
It's pretty disappointing that you didn't get it done.
Wow, you get no sympathy.
I know.
Did you take a nap last night?
What's that?
Did you take a nap last night?
I did for a couple hours. I was, I didn't want oversleep, so I kept waking up, it's 1 o'clock, it's 2 o'clock, it's 3 o'clock and...
He slept while he was driving the new fire truck home, he put it on cruise control.
What time do you, what time do you hit the road?
It's 3:05.
Chased the light down the road.
It's not that early then.
It fell off the back and it's skating down the road and it's past me.
Okay, so let's move on, purchase orders for approval, I've got a whole stack here.
So there's one there for McGee Ford that you, that's the one you guys said you were going to hold up.
Skipping that, right?
Yeah.
We all set?
I'm ready when you are.
I would make a motion to approve purchase order 052415 to the Castleton Fire Department for the yearly points fund.
I recuse myself from that, I want to call the court. It's on you, I'm recusing myself. You didn't say the dollar amount of that one.
12,000.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? I'm an aye too.
You step right in like that, that's good.
I would make a motion to approve purchase order number 053058 to Fabian's for emergency line repair for Crystal Haven for the sum of $3,057.
I'll second.
Move motion and a second, any discussion? Just wondering what that, what that, what happened there, Mike.
This was when the, this, this was like in April or something, they, we never, they never billed us and they just must have found it and they submitted, it was when the, the line was broken and they had to excavate out the line and fix it back in, it was like April or May, it was early on.
We tried to dig it, we tried to dig it and it was so deep in the ground, we couldn't reach it.
Is it a sewer line or a...
Sewer line.
Sewer line, okay, okay, that's, that's all, I just wondered. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I would make a motion to approve purchase order 053027 to Champlain Construction for the Parsons Hill Sidewalk Project. What do we got for a number here? For the sum of $227,214.47.
Second.
And could you please add that where the funds are coming from so the county department knows sort of...
The 188,000 is coming from, what do we got here? Looks like 92,400 is coming from a small-scale Lincoln Ped Grant and Highway Carryover is
I'll second that part too.
Got a motion and a second, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I would make a motion to approve purchase order 053163 to Champlain Construction, change order number one for the Parsons Hill Sidewalk Project for the sum of $1,598.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
That was for realignment, we had to move it, we wasn't going to go to the fire agents and stuff.
Make a motion to approve purchase order 053164 to Champlain Construction for change order number two for Parsons Hill Sidewalk Project for the sum of $4,745.50.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Just what, what exactly does that mean, Mike? Is it sidewalk protection, I mean, do they spray it with something or what?
No, that was the entrance off the Route 4A into Dunkin' Donuts, they put the gravel and the plywood down over that to, it was really an appeasement of the owners because things had dragged out there and they were, we all met, I think actually the chairman was there too. But that was the cost of that 800 dollars worth of, or 400 dollars worth of stone that we get charged 4,700 dollars for.
What they originally wanted 7,000 for.
Yeah. And we didn't have to keep it either. They used some of it along the, the driveways and stuff like that, so...
Yeah, I remember seeing it.
Dunkin' Donuts semi, I drove them right over to Dunkin' Donuts.
Got a couple questions in it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
And make a motion to approve purchase order number 053052 to Farrar Incorporated for the sum of $8,844.80 and that was to rebuild the pump at Sucker Brook.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion?
We don't have it back yet, it's, Russ was going to pick it up Friday, but there was a hiccup there, so he can't, he couldn't go down, so he'll be going down this week to get that second pump in.
What, just roughly, real quick, Mike, what does a new pump cost?
60, or no, there's a new one on that one.
I'm just curious.
Hmm, I don't, I don't recall, Bob. It was, it was really expensive, but I don't remember, one of those pumps was $60,000 on one of our pump stations.
It's a lot more than...
You have to go together?
It was a lot more than 8,800, I remember that one.
Keene, New Hampshire, I think?
Keene, New Hampshire, it said?
Yeah, Keene, yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the last one, we're not doing.
That's correct. You probably ought to initial this one, Bob. Granted, I'm going to get a whopping 50 bucks, but still. You know, it is. You had, you had, you had two of them.
Yeah.
Just initial it.
Thank you.
While you're signing that, the board asked a question about can we get the same kind of pumps? And after talking with Russ, that they're all different voltages and, and all this, and sizes and that, to refit everything, so all the pumps will work on everything, it would be way more money than buying the pumps. So, but he is, he does have some prices on buying bench stock so that, or getting, trying to find rebuilt ones, which is a lot cheaper.
Yes.
So he, he has been feeding me a little information here and there when he gets stuff, but nothing that's ready to put together in a package to the board.
We really should have something on the shelf for the...
Yeah, I guess he talked to one of this company and they said that they would help him look for these rebuilt pumps that remanufactured, so he got an in from, somebody from Royal Water, that's where it was from.
So I would ask that he labeled them really well, so if he buys a pump for Sand Hill Project or whatever, it says Sand Hill Project, so if for some reason Russ is not here, somebody could walk in there and say, oh, what pump do I get for this particular place? So just, just have them label it, because if you say they're all different...
Yeah, they're all different sizes, different voltages.
Yeah.
If that's an issue for them to pick that up, I can probably make that.
Okay. You might have somebody driving through there frequently, right?
Daily basis, right?
Every day.
Every day? Keene, New Hampshire?
Among other places.
Yeah, don't you have another yard down in like Winchendon or somewhere down there?
I used to, I don't anymore.
Toy Town.
Winchington, Tunville. It's like...
Winchentucky.
I used to call it. That's where I got my dog.
Okay, move on, warrants?
All right, I would make a motion to approve warrant number 111R for the sum of $700. Warrant number 1108 for the sum of $38,273.85. Warrant number 1111 for the sum of $830,496.44. Warrant number 1031P for the sum of $19,692.46. And warrant number 1107P for the sum of $19,884.99.
I'll second it.
I think you made a mistake on the very first one, I think you missed a one.
1111R.
There's four ones and I think you only said three.
Well, I will amend my motion to change the first warrant to 1111R for the sum of $700.
I have a motion, did I get a second?
You did.
Any more discussion beyond the first error? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. May I ask who seconded the third one down, Champlain Construction for 227?
I did.
Okay, thank you. We'll put Robert Steele on the next minutes for you.
Oops. Oh, you're all right, you're all right. Just trying to make it more complicated, that's all.
Yeah, there you go.
There you go, see this? Clark Kent? Superman. Clark Kent? Superman. I had to, I had to buy reading glasses, finally, I just, my glasses aren't working, I'm like, looks like Jonas on a Zoom call. Count the pores in his nose.
Yep. There's no rubber band on the red folder tonight, Mike.
There's not?
No.
Maybe had a blow up going over. like, looks like Jonas on a Zoom call. Count the pores in his nose. Yep.
I gotta, I gotta loan her. There's no rubber band on the red folder tonight, Mike.
There's not?
No.
Maybe had a blow up when we over.
So you're, you're responsible for making sure nothing turns up missing, upon your many other responsibilities.
Chasing them down the road when the wind blowing them.
Well, consider yourself warned.
Thank you.
We have descending papers right now. So now we're going to move on to select word comments and our concerns. We'll start with Mary Lee.
I'm fine.
Rob?
Um, do we know anything about the water at Crystal Haven yet, running into the sewer?
Anything?
The water running into the sewer at Crystal Haven, have we learned anything on that yet?
Um, we learned when they refurbished the manholes that are along Crystal Haven, Russ told me that there was a bunch of water coming in those down lower where the, where the bricks were, so that's one source of water. The one on the road yet, the can't, the people that, from Dundons are gonna, were supposed to camera it and they keep rescheduling, rescheduling, so we, they haven't been here yet to do it. They did fix the, the one that was leaking over here on 4A, they, they reused hydraulic cement and they were able to seal that one up, so that one was completed.
Our guys did that?
The only thing they didn't do is the sag that they found in the pipe, it wasn't leaking, it was just a sag there, and I'm like, I'm not tearing up sidewalks right at this point to figure that one out. So it should've been done before the sidewalks went in and it didn't get done, so I just told them, keep monitoring it, you know?
Keep an eye on it.
Just, you know, make sure that we keep, peek there, but, and then the manholes were refurbished, they're bright orange, if you wanna go hunting, you could maybe peel some of that stuff off, but it's hard as a rock, I mean, you can't screed and scrape it with like a screwdriver, but they're done.
Sure. So that was three manholes that got done, right?
I think there were four.
Four?
Four, I couldn't remember, there was one on Sucker Brook and I think there's three on, there was three on Crystal Haven.
Bill was $17,000, so I was hoping it was at least four, if not more.
And we're gonna look at...
Could've been more.
Continuing that on an annual basis.
I was hoping.
Yeah, that's, so we're looking at the, finding where the worst ones are and being able to keep these refurbishments up, because it's got a 10-year, I think it was a 10-year warranty on it, so...
That was gonna cost a lot more if we don't do it.
Was it six? There's only four holes I saw, so...
So is it in Crystal Haven and Crystal Meadows?
Yeah, nah, it was down Crystal Haven, down Crystal Haven's where they had all the trouble, the brick come down, down Crystal Haven and across, down in there.
Down and over, down to Sucker Brook.
It's in where the old trailer park was with one of them, one or two.
There was one on the corner of Crystal Meadows, the second entrance, it wasn't even completely uncovered with...
That's what we had uncovered where the waters, there's no water on that side and it's all kind of it when it gets the other side to roll, that's why that one's open.
Oh, okay, okay. That's the one where we suspect a leak.
In between the two. Camera couldn't, didn't see it from that side.
Anything else, Rob?
That's it.
Mark?
I have nothing tonight.
Rob? Did we need to do something with this, or was this just left on my table from two weeks ago? We did that, we took care of that. We did. Winter salt, we bought that last, last meeting. I thought so, why is this on my table?
It was in your box. I bought everything that was in your mailbox.
I thought we approved this already.
Okay.
We did. Anything else? No. I'm good, too. So with a quick review of action items, we all have to take a look at the UDR, review that, and if there's any feedback, we need to have that back, I would say a week from Friday. Private roads, select word needs to take a road trip individually, not as a group, to look at Higgins Road, Gump Road and Cedar Mountain Road past Goldfinch, if you haven't recently been there, or Yellowfinch. I know where it is, that's where we burnt that barn that time for a drill. And then we also have to take a look at the budget and do a budget review and ride that back to Mike. Anything else I'm forgetting? Mike's already got his list, right?
I do. Pretty good.
Anything else I'm forgetting? Okay. Do we need an executive session for anything?
I'd like one on personnel, please.
We need an executive session for personnel, so I would entertain a motion.
Board and Mike.
That a motion?
Yes.
At 8:54.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded, going to executive session with the board and the town manager at 8:54, all in favor?
I think your timer's wrong.